There we go, and I'm gonna shut off my video. Okay.
Okay. So I will call the meeting to order at 7:01 on Tuesday, October 12th. This is the meeting of the select board. Currently present is myself, Erin Underhill, Vice Chair, Craig Schultz, Clerk. We have Mike Gazinski, our Town Administrator, Carol Johnston, Finance Director, John McVeigh, Board of Health, Jonathan Berry, Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, Karen DiMarzo, who is our Operations Manager, and Melissa Ricos, and she's one of our consultants. Awesome. Okay, so are there any announcements that anybody has in particular for the start of the meeting? Okay. All right, moving right along then. Okay, so at this point, we are, we have open session where we'll open the town meeting warrant, have some discussions, and then we can vote to close and sign the warrant.
Make a motion, we open the town meeting warrant?
Second, it's been moved and seconded to open the fall town meeting warrant. I will take a vote, Craig?
Yes, I.
Myself, I, so motion passes. So the fall town meeting warrant is now open. So for discussion, it looks like we have an update, I would assume, from Board of Health regarding the fall town meeting?
This is this, Madam Chairman, is this Vice Chair, whatever their proper title is? Is this in regards to the basement issue or the first floor issue?
This, I have no idea.
I believe it is, yes.
End it up for you, Erin.
Thank you.
Next time I'll nod.
All right.
Article eight.
Okay.
If John's not on yet, I can speak if you like.
I'll leave the technical end to Melissa. Just as a recap, I know I spoke to the Finance Committee on this. Article eight is a proposed amendment to the stormwater regulations. In that amendment, it seeks to keep the groundwater development or basement, I should say, from intruding upon the groundwater by keeping a distance of two feet. So I, as we discussed, there's many pros to having this amendment, including the, you know, eliminating some pumps, passive and active, you know, stormwater drains. I think there's, you know, obviously homeowners would be pleased not to have the risk of some pump and some pump failures in a new development. I was looking at the potential for groundwater pollution. You lessen or eliminate groundwater pollution with, you know, basement activities that could get into the groundwater. Runoff in hydrology issues are more, Melissa has more of a background on that. So I know that that's a plus, I would imagine, but she could probably go into a little bit of detail on that. But overall, I think it's a plus, and I think would benefit future developments down the road and help the homeowners out as well. But I think, Melissa, if you want to add more to the details, maybe technical engineering aspects, the pros, I would imagine.
Sure. This is something that we've been recommending to towns as they update stormwater bylaws for the MS4 permit to think about incorporating. As John said, the pros are to reduce impacts on the groundwater elevation, keep natural hydrology, which is obviously important with Melissa having their own town wells. Eliminating some, the need for some pumps and drains, which oftentimes can discharge, will discharge directly to roadways, causing flooding issues or icing conditions in the winter. Sometimes this can be a real headache for DPWs when they constantly have to salt roads where some pumps are discharging. And then it reduces runoff just overall from projects by keeping water in the ground. Water flows a lot slower through the ground than it does over the surface. You know, the cons, the cons, I guess, if you're, if you're, would ask what the cons are, it would be that you would just be requiring some more soil testing for building construction to identify where that seasonal high groundwater is for particular homes. It could also require some additional engineering analysis and possibly fill, you know, when the developers in the design stages of their, of their subdivisions. And, you know, you could potentially eliminate some sailors in some areas if, you know, the groundwater is just that high. I think one important point to make is, you know, the questions I'll get is who exactly will this affect? And this is part of the stormwater, this is being proposed to start part of the stormwater regulation. In order to be regulated, it would be an acre or more of disturbance. So the thought is you wouldn't be affecting typical, single-family home construction. It would be the subdivisions in the larger developments that would be subject to this regulation.
Okay. Thank you. Craig, any questions?
Yeah. First off, after Kathy McGinnis pointed out at the FinCom meeting that I attended, you know, that this is fairly common in other towns, and if you look and you can see where there's six, seven steps going into a home where they raise the cellar or the foundation. Now that I'm driving through, to drive to work, I'm noticing nothing but these new constructions that have all these steps going in. Doesn't seem like this is an uncommon bylaw, and Melissa's, as we all know, quite wet. So I think it makes sense. I think part of our duty on the select board is to try to promote rules and that protect the residents of the town. This will protect new residents of the town from people that are now building in swampier areas potentially, not wetlands per se, but area with higher groundwater. So I never did have a major issue with, I thought it made sense. I was, I'm interested, I was pleased to hear that it, it is only larger developments over an acre of disturbance. And the other part that I think the, I don't know if it was ever clarified for the FinCom, but this wouldn't impact any of our current construction, any of our current homes or any of our current permitted projects. Everything that's already got a building permit would not be affected by this. It would only be going forward if I, if I'm correct, and I think I checked that with Mike, and I think that is the correct interpretation. So that's my thought on it.
I see people nodding, so is that a confirmation?
That was one of these, I think.
So it is not for existing projects, it would be moving forward, correct?
Right, it would be anything that would need to come in front of the board for a stormwater permit.
Okay.
After the town meeting where this is passed, if it should be passed.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this one? Okay. Hearing none. I think we'd be moving on to the capital planning portion then.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are you all set?
Seems that way, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Berry?
All right, thanks, thanks Erin, thanks everybody for having me here tonight. So I wanted to share with the board our most recent Capital Planning Committee report. I just sent it like literally minutes before this meeting, so folks probably have not had a chance to look at it, but I can, I can put it up on the screen if that would be helpful for everybody. Let me throw it up on the screen here. One second. All right, can people see that?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe just a quick reminder of what the Capital Planning Committee is and isn't. So, you know, we've been in place for about four, going on five years now. And our man, you know, remit is to try to, as best as we can, to identify all the future capital needs of the town, and that's working with all the various departments in town and town administration as well. And then as these capital items come up for, you know, consideration at a town meeting, for example, we try to prioritize them. So, which as you well know, is, you know, not the easiest thing to do to compare a, you know, something the fire department needs to something the school needs. So, but we have come up over the years with, with a process and kind of a template for how we do the scoring. And, you know, this, what you'll see here is sort of the output of that process we've been going through. And we do continually try to refine that process as we go. What we're not is obviously a funding source, as everybody well knows, but there can sometimes be a bit of confusion as people come to the Capital Planning Committee thinking somehow we magically can find funds for things, you know, that, that's not our job. Our job is just to do our best in terms of identifying, you know, higher priorities versus lower priorities for the town. So this time around, there were quite a few projects that, that came up as, as part of our review. And you can see in that table in the middle there, 27 projects were, I shouldn't call them projects, I mean, they're, they're capital items. So, you know, equipment and other things of that nature, sometimes there are projects too. So we had 27 projects totaling about almost $7.6 million. Some of these will be very familiar to all of you. So the biggest one, which is about 5.6 million, is the, the water treatment upgrades for plants one and two to deal with the PFAS issues at those wells. Couple other large items are fire engine and the ambulance, replacing one of the ambulances. And then there's some slightly less expensive, but still very important items to police car, some elevator repairs in the middle high school, new freezer at the middle high school, and also a freezer for the council of aging. And we've got a list of all these on, on the subsequent pages. So what, what we ended up with were 10 of these projects we identified as the highest priorities. And maybe I'll, if you go to page, I'll go here just to show you. So this is kind of how it all breaks down. So these 10 were our highest, what ranked as our highest priorities through our process. These were the medium priorities, and these were the lower priorities. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, we recognize these are all important items. So, you know, we're not trying to say that, for example, picnic tables at Pleasant Meadow Park, that is important, and the Concom came and they gave us a good talk as to why that needs to happen. And we agree, we completely agree, those, those are important things, and we'd love to have those. And it's, you know, frankly, not a very big dollar item either. However, you know, and through our process, you know, it, it wasn't as higher priority as replacing a fire engine, for example. So, so it can be quite difficult, and as Erin well knows, we were just having quite a debate about a couple items that were sort of right on the line, frankly, between a medium and a high priority. So, you know, it does get a little subjective at times as to what, you know, kind of where everything ends up. So, you know, playground renovation at Oak Grove, you know, really very important item. The excavator, which mainly would be used to, to do some work at the cemetery, also very important item, but just kind of slightly below the line. So, so I guess, you know, I'm saying all that for the, for the board, just, you know, don't necessarily take these as absolute rankings, you know, there, there is some discretion and some judgment that goes into this. So, you know, just because something might be slightly lower in the list doesn't mean it's not important. But the big ones, maybe just the, the ones that did rank as highest through our process, as I mentioned, the water treatment plant, you know, it's our understanding there is some funding potentially available to help defray some of that cost. Ambulance, a fire box at the library, fire panel, panel replacement at the town hall, which actually there has been, the town did get some funding to pay for this. A new fire engine, walk-in freezer at the school, a new police car, a snowplow for the DPW. This is just the front, you know, plow part for, for a big truck. Elevator upgrades at the school, and then this freezer for the council of aging. What, one nice thing I'd say about the process that we're starting to really see more and more is that, well, these things are not, most of these things are not surprises to us. So, for example, the chief Barrett did a great job over the past couple of years of laying out, you know, when fire trucks and ambulances and things like that were going to come up. So it wasn't any really a surprise to us when he came to us this time and saying, hey, the fire truck is due. And he said, oh yeah, we see that, you have that in the list, you know, for 2022, we see it. We're not surprised that you're coming to us with that, that item. So, you know, one thing we've been talking about with the committee is, you know, while we're finally beginning to see the, the picture what's coming down the line, really figuring out how to get that, you know, communicated to the town as best we can is something we're really going to be striving to do as, as we continue to go on and letting the town really see the big picture of the items that are going to come rolling down the list. Because there, there are a lot, I mean, the capital, our, our current list is many, many tens of millions of dollars that we've got identified as potential projects coming down the line. So let me just pause there and open up for questions folks have about the process or any of these items in particular, or anything at all relates to our work we've been doing.
Great, thank you. Craig, any questions in particular?
No, there's no surprises on the list. I mean, it's exactly as you said, we've seen and heard, I mean, didn't hear about the freezer, but it's 8,000 bucks. But, you know, most big items we've heard about quite often, and no surprises there at all. My only thought with it is, and looking at the warrants, I'm going to jump ahead just a little bit. I like the way we have the highest and the medium priorities on, I believe, and I haven't done the comparison. I think you have all the high and all the medium priorities on, is that right, Mike? When the warrant is proposed?
Yes, that's what's listed currently.
I would suggest also just adding the picnic tables, even though they're a very low priority. It's like loose change, I mean, if we're rounding and we have enough free cash to fund something, but not enough to fund a $30,000 item, that one could slide in, and I think it would be a benefit, obviously not a huge priority, but it does fit the funding mechanism, I think. I'd, I'd like to use as much of the free cash as we can to benefit the town. So I'd slide that one, even though it doesn't rise to the same level as a fire truck, but it's only $6,700 too, you know? And then the other one, the charging station, if there's really a $50,000 grant, unless that grant is guaranteed for the future, I'd like to see it as an option to consider on the warrant too. I'm not saying I'd vote for those two until I see free cash, I can't even say which of these are what I would endorse, but I'd like to have the option. It seems a shame if we could possibly lose a $50,000 grant by not funding it. It makes sense to have the ability to consider it, and if we don't put it on the warrant, we can't consider it. And again, the picnic tables is the rounding item that might slide in if we have an extra $7,000 after we funded all the top items. But I don't disagree with your priority list at all. I mean, everything else looks excellent, you know?
May I ask a question?
Sorry, go ahead.
John, the, what Craig was just mentioning regarding this charging station, what are the terms of the $50,000 grant? How long will it be available? What is, what's associated with that?
Yeah, I don't know all the details. I, I, that's a question for, for Bob Weiss. But my general understanding, it's, it's available for a little while. You know, I don't think it's disappearing tomorrow, is my understanding. But it's, it's, you know, it's probably not more than a year or two before that goes away. So, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's my thought, if we put it on the warrant now and after we talk, because we're going to close the warrant tonight. If it's not on the warrant, we can't even consider it if Bob Weiss says, oh no, it'll be gone in January. So without having Bob here to tell us when it goes away, I don't want to lose the ability to consider it because $50,000 of state money for something that is going to be important, is going to be the trend, is going to be something we need, is something worth considering.
Understood.
I will, oh, sorry Pete, just, just one quick comment on charging station. And one thing that is a little bit unclear is what the ongoing operating costs would be for that. There would, there would be something, although it could conceivably be recouped through, you know, what you charge people to charge their cars, you know, through the, you know, like a fee for charging it. But there is an ongoing cost too, and that, that did, that actually did ding it down a little bit in the priority list, knowing that there was a potential ongoing cost that wasn't captured there.
Yeah, we've done a little research on those for some of the places I've worked, and the, the charge you can charge people for it oftentimes keeps it. While I work for nonprofits, I won't say it's a profit center, it's, it's not been a drain on the organization.
Yeah.
But all that needs to be worked out. I was just wondering, because we did discuss this, or you did, at the last energy meeting, and I was wondering if Bob had come up with any more details. Is he on this tonight, on this meeting?
He, yeah, he is not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I was just curious, because I agree, I think that's something worthwhile. But we, we're going to have to discuss all of this as we proceed now. So go ahead, Madam Vice Chair, you're still running it, please go forward.
You can certainly have it.
I'll fall back into seconding and Erin will make motions, we've all got our roles.
First of all, I apologize for being so late. I had no option, but I do apologize. So, okay, this is excellent. I will, I am going to comment that the work I've seen, both from this committee and the Energy Committee, I'm very impressed with the, what these individuals have done. And I think that Craig's suggestion, something we've talked about for a while, and something we have to consider as we move forward on deciding what's going to be on the warrant tonight. So please keep that in mind. Is there anything else, Jonathan, that you can think of that you feel we ought to consider to add a little more weight one way or another if we wanted to put something on the warrant? Call it a placeholder in case something falls off.
You mean from, from that, assuming that the high and mediums somehow can make it there, something from the bottom list there?
From wherever you choose.
Yeah. Um, well, hmm, good question. I would have agreed with the picnic tables. I think it's, it's, you know, some nice benefit for, for very low cost. So, so I agree, that one is probably worth it. The other one, that it's, it's a little nondescript there, but the lighting for the library, that one I might poke up the list a little bit if, if there was some extra funding. That seems like something that they're getting by okay now, but at some point, something's going to go wrong and it's not going to work. So you might be able to get ahead of that a little bit, you know?
Okay.
I would agree with that.
The one that I have concerns with, excuse me, is the pickleball, pickleball court. We've had a number of comments from residents, and apparently there is some kind of noise associated with the rackets when they play, and apparently it's disturbing. So again, that's something that, you know, normally we don't think of it as rising to the very top level, but I'm wondering if that's something we need to consider as putting in there, but at any rate.
I won't comment on the pickleball court, because I think there's been enough comments on that, from what I understand. What, what I would maybe just throw out there in this, Mr. Barubi on the Finance Committee is also thinking about this. There, there are items that do come up periodically, or actually regularly, that we don't necessarily think are capital. So I think there is a bigger question to be sorted through on some things, like for example, replacement Chromebooks, that's something the school needs every year forever, basically. They need to replace, or whatever the next thing after Chromebook is. That, you know, we see that as more of a budget item than a capital item. And even the, the chief would argue that police cars are a budget item and not a capital item. And, you know, that one's probably a little bit more debatable, but, you know, he does have a regular schedule of cars laid out. So I do think it's something that's a bigger picture, maybe this is a tri-board discussion or something at some point, seeing if we can really try to put things in their right places, you know, going forward. Because I think there's some things that, that truly are budget items that are kind of finding their way onto this capitalist.
Yeah, and I'll disagree with that a little bit, because I've been down that path a few times. Those items do last for the three years, but the reason, maybe they're not capital, I'll agree with that. They don't fall into my definition of capital either. But I don't want to put it in the budget, only because when we put those things in the budget, the Chrome, and in the past, not with the current school board, not with the current chief, but cars, bulletproof vests, Chromebooks, curriculum supplies found their ways into teacher salary, staff salary, and other things. And this is a way that really extends the control, not possibly through capital, but on the warrant. You can only use that money for what it's voted. So it does provide an extra layer of protection for the town as far as management. Now, we haven't had that problem with the current school board, the school committee, and we haven't had the problem with the current chief, but if we wanted to go down that path, the reason most of these things exist as warrant articles before the capital camp projects came along was because it gave the control over how the money is used exactly, and it prevented that, that shifting. And when there wasn't funds available, it, it gave us an easy way to control what was spent as a town versus a smaller subset of the town. That's the only reason, so I agree, they're not capital, I don't think they should necessarily be on your item, but almost if there's a warrant, a budgetary warrant item or something that they go into, just so it's a slightly different, different construct. But I agree, that is a capital, that's a tri-board meeting conversation.
Yeah. And, and I would agree with that too, and, and there's a couple of things we've, we've actually just sort of punted off our list, like the school bus leases, for example. You have to do that every single year, so we can't really rank that as, as compared to something else.
And I feel that the Chromebooks and that is falls in some, something.
Yes, similar, right, exactly.
I have another question, has to do with something you mentioned, Peter Barubi, and I know he's been very anxious about sidewalks. Now, is that considered a capital item you want to put on here?
We, we have not looked at sidewalks for this cycle, so I would say no. It did not come up before our committee as an item to discuss. So I, I, I guess I would just say I have no opinion on the sidewalks, because I haven't given it any thought.
Okay, I bring it up because it has been brought up to us recently, just curious. Okay, were there any other?
Was there a project even proposed with a price, with a price on it at this point, or was it not well defined?
No.
Because I know that the DPW director's working on one.
There was no project proposed to the Capital Planning Committee for this, this go-around, no?
Thank you.
Okay. Do the select board members have any other comments? Mr. Gazinski, anyone? Otherwise, I'm going to open it to anyone who would like to make a comment.
The only other thing I'd say is I was just doing a little quick math on my fingers and calculator. It looks like there's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars once you pull the grant-funded items, the, the enterprise fund items, and it, it seems like it's a reasonable list, and we could probably go fairly deep into it. So I think that that makes a lot of sense.
Well, I think that's where we go next, but I just want to make sure that if other individuals have any comments at this stage, let them speak now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We did get a question via the chat. Lauren, do you want to pose that one? No? Okay, so we got a question in the chat, it says if Melissa receives.
Okay. Hi, I, my question is that the, good evening, everybody, and I've seen the work of the Capital Planning Committee and the algorithms and rubrics and such, so congratulations. There's always going to be things to add, unfortunately. My question is specific to the big, the big mamba jamba here, the PFAS water treatment plant. And I understand every community in Massachusetts is going through some semblance of this. So everybody's looking for support dollars from the same sources. My question is if Melissa receives federal funds toward this project, and at town meeting, we are borrowing with the assumption that that won't be happening, because we don't know. And so we can't, we can't proceed without, you know, that as an, as an unresolved issue. How will, can somebody please explain the mechanics of the borrowing so that we're not borrowing close to $6 million? I know the warrant article says five, but this estimate shows six. Well, how will we do the borrowing in, in a way that it keeps it current to the receipt of federal funds, which could in fact be in the it keeps it current to the receipt of federal funds, which could in fact be in the millions so that we're not borrowing $6 million and then finding ourselves thinking that we have a windfall and start distributing the money elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, Craig is probably better, but let me make an initial comment. We don't, just because the town says we need 5.6 and they agree on 5.6 or whatever that amount is, we don't go out and immediately borrow it. And we certainly don't begin spending it all at once. If the federal funds come in, it just means that we do not have to borrow those funds. And we will allocate them based on our needs. And if I'm not mistaken, we can also reimburse with respect to what we have spent. And I believe that is accurate from what I've talked with Mr. Alkum Class about. So we have a lot of options, but it's not like if we approve 5.6 today and tomorrow in comes 5.6. Um, that doesn't mean we're going out borrowing 5.6.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that's exactly right. It's exactly like the school was. We voted to borrow 51, 52 million. The state money was promised, but we didn't have it. Um, by the time the project was finished, the state had reimbursed us. So we ended up borrowing the, the net amount, not the full five point, uh, 51 million that was needed for the school. So I only borrowed in the $30 million range. It's exactly the same process. And when you borrow money, you're not borrowing money to put 5.6 million dollars in your bank account. You're borrowing 5.6 million dollars to build a water treatment plant. If the water treatment plant comes in at $5 million, God willing, um, that 600,000 is never borrowed. So it's not that it's a cap. It, it, we can't borrow any more than we need. And at our last meeting or the meeting before, we discussed using, um, the proposed 2.4 million of revenue from the feds plus, uh, some from taxation to fund this to keep the cost down to the rate payer as low as possible and earmarking as much of new federal money as possible. It'll take a year to build this at least. Um, by the time you go through design, build and open, and you won't borrow until you finish the building, you'll do interim bonds, but you won't finalize the bonding until it's finished. So by then we'll have a very good handle exactly how much we have from the feds, how much we can afford from taxation and how much the project actually costs us.
There are.
So the 5.9 is the cap. Yeah.
Right. There are also lead times. We may think everything's ready and we can get it done in a year, but if we can't get
Yeah.
the equipment and whatever else, it may take longer than that. Um, and so you're also aware, um, I believe that the entire select board has signed a letter uh, requesting that the state to our reps and, uh, requesting that the $5 billion presently under discussion at the state for allocations, the various time towns, the at least, uh, what do we say 16 to 20 something million of that be allocated to the town of Millis for the purpose of PFAS, which is in fact exactly what these funds are for. So that request has gone in, in writing to our representatives and the governor. Are there any other questions? Okay.
All right.
Now, having come in a little late, I don't know what else has been discussed or where we are.
Water.
Trying to.
Chair Jermaine, Chairman Jermaine. We, um, we pretty much just opened the warrant and we talked with, um, our John McVeigh and our consultant about the basement, the Article eight basement, the two feet and the, the water, groundwater and so forth. So that was discussed and then we moved on to, um, the capital planning committee and that, that's it so far.
Okay. Okay. Um, well, I'm going to ask the two of you, how do you want to proceed at this point? Because we've got some latitude and how we deal with the warrant and the issues we want to work with on the warrant. We can go through them sequentially. We can go through some of the basic, more thorny issues upfront. What would you two like to do?
Um, nicely and succinctly?
I'm fine with going over it from, from beginning. I mean, it makes sense that way.
I, I think that's fine.
I believe, okay. So I, I know Jonathan has to go, um, and he was still sharing, so I wanted to make sure we let him go and thanked him.
Yeah, because I think at this point they've done the job there and we just have to decide funding sources. Yeah.
Thank you, Jonathan. As always, you've done a superb job. Um, this town owes you a great deal of gratitude for what you've put together on the capital planning committee, you and the committee, but I know you've done an enormous amount of work personally. So thank you.
Well, thank you all and, uh, good luck, uh, getting through that list. Hopefully there's, there's money for everything. That's what we'd love to see.
Don't we wish.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Bye bye.
Good night. Okay. Um, I got to pull up what I want from Jonathan's list so that I have that in front of me. Um, there we go. Okay. Why don't we then just take the town, the, uh, warrant sequentially, give me a updated, this is today, draft.
Chairman, I just want to make sure the board received, um, the most recent, uh, updates. Um, some of it is color coded just to provide some, some clarity as we go through it. Since there's been a few, few proposed changes that are, are here for the board's discussion.
Yes, I see them. You have them highlighted in yellow, all proposed changes that summarizes them. Um, let's just go through the warrant that's been updated as of this afternoon, I guess.
Yes.
And take it right down from the beginning, if that's all right. So, I mean, we all know that there are unpaid bills, but I don't want to gloss over this. If there's anyone who has any questions, particularly from the audience. So is there anyone there who has a concern? These are literally bills that we have to deal with every time they came in late. And just obligations for the town. It happens for every town meeting. There's nothing special about them and they're all within reason and have been reviewed in their entirety. Excuse me. Article two, um, the marijuana impact. What I will say is that there are specific ways in which this money can be allocated. I think that's the best way to describe it. We cannot just allocate the funds any way we choose. So when you look at this, they all have to be associated with some form of how we deal with marijuana and its impact on the town. Also, um, we have what the fire additional repair fund, okay, water tank maintenance and the SEIU. These are items that we have agreed to in various forms, the SEIU. A, a bargaining agreement is something, but Mr. Gazinski has gone over this before, but we need to make sure that we meet our agreements. We have an outstanding contract on the water tank maintenance and we have repairs, fire department that are obligations that we have to deal with. So that's what these basically amount to. I apologize if I don't give a lot of detail. If you have a question, please ask.
Uh, I, I think these are, I think you've explained it well, and this is the list I expected to see. So.
Okay. Now, article three gets into a very, a variety of items that I would say in part come off of our capital planning. I guess as I'm looking through it and I have to be honest, I haven't had a chance today to go through all of this, but they appear to mostly be coming from that list. So I'm going to ask, uh, the two other board members, have you had a chance to review this particular list that's here?
I've, we've looked it over. I've looked it over. Um, I've now looked it over, pushed up against the, uh, capital planning committee list.
Yep.
And, um, moving the stuff off that's clearly borrowing PFAS, fire truck, ambulance, which are a little bit later discussion potentially.
Right.
Um, I would say that this list is what I would expect with the addition, but I'd like to see the picnic tables for $6700 and the charging station for 76,800 added to the list. So we have the latitude to discuss those and research them. Not necessarily going to recommend on anything until we have the final prices of everything broken down, but I'd like to see those two put on the list so they can be considered at future meetings and presented at town meeting for the voters to see also.
Well, assuming funds are available, we.
No, I mean, I'm the, I'm not saying we're recommending this list. Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's clear. Uh, is there anything else we want to put on the list that we may or may not recommend? Uh, just going to ask that first. If not, is there any objection from either board, from any of the board members, Ms. Underhill? Do you have a problem with that? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, I mean, there's obviously more on here than is in the high list. It goes into the medium list. Um, I do agree with adding the, the picnic tables and the charging station, um, especially since there's a grant factor in there. Um, so yeah, it just gives us some flexibility if those are options.
I.
Want to be clear, I wouldn't be adding the charging station if there wasn't a grant. It doesn't rise to that level without it, but that was a superseding function, you know?
Right. Well, I think we all agree on that, but I would like Mr. Weiss to at least get us more detail, even though we're adding it in because if it turns out oh, the grant's there for the next three or five years, that's one thing. If it's something that's going to disappear in six months to a year, that's a whole different issue.
Yeah. And, and if it disappears in six months to a year and it doesn't right and it's, and we don't have enough fu- funds for it, at least we have the ability to discuss it. But if we do have enough, then we make an informed decision. We don't leave $50,000 on the table.
Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Gazinski because of the letters we've received regarding pickleball. Do we or do we not think it's advisable to even consider that?
Well, that's, that's a policy decision of the board. Uh, I will tell. I will tell you, we have, um, you know, received, um, several complaints from, from the neighbors uh, in regards to the noise, as I'm sure the board recalls, you did take some action to limit the hours um, of play to help, uh, reduce that, but there are certainly still um, noise concerns being expressed by the, uh, by the neighborhood nearby. Um, I would, I'd just like to take the opportunity just to remind the board and, and those wa- those watching that we don't, we can't guarantee that the, the full funding here is available. We're still waiting for the certification of free cash. We've, we've been waiting for this, from the state for a period of time. We hope to have it by this evening. It could arrive any day. Um, but until we have that, we certainly won't know what level of funding is available for all of these items. Um, and then certainly if the, if the board feels it's an important issue to add the, uh, uh, and the sound reducers for, uh, for, for that new activity that's going on over there, we could certainly add it at the bottom and it could be considered as part of the broader, uh, article at the meeting. So it's, it's purely up to the board to determine the relative priority of that.
I do have a question. As I recall at the last meeting when this came up, I asked a question, could this be paid for out of the funds for the school, new school, because the courts were put in as part of that funding? And although this is an unanticipated expense, is it considered something that is derived as a result of these new courts having them built in conjunction with the new school? And can that funding therefore be used accordingly?
Um, I, I believe we've given that money back. I, we, we, like I said on the PFAS issue, I believe we closed the bond.
So I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Don't know where we stand on that. That's why I meant, I did ask Mr. Gazinski to check on that.
Carol, Carol, do you have any, um, any insight on that? Whether there's any possibility of utilizing that, um, authorization or is that pretty much all closed off?
No, there are funds still available. They haven't completely closed the project off. That would be, have to go back to the, um, you know, Clyde Brown, uh, committee to find out whether or not they would fund that. But there are funds available, the port, for the 14,000.
So the board, if the board would, you know, wanted to put a request into the school building committee, um, to consider that, it could certainly do that. Um, and then they could, they could, uh, make a determination whether they feel that's properly within the legal scope to move forward with that.
Okay, then I would think that if the two other members would agree that we can at least ask, what is it? The ESBC? To consider that. Um, I don't want to belabor it. I'm just saying, let's ask if they'll consider it and see where we go from there.
It doesn't sound like a bad idea. I mean, if it falls within their purview and it makes sense, then it sounds like a, a good option. If it doesn't, then we'll be back to figuring out what we're going to do.
Yeah. I, I'm, I think it makes sense to bring it there. I, I'm, I won't predict how it will go. I don't know when we're next scheduled to meet, if ever. I think the ESBC officially has at our celebratory last meeting, but we can come out of retirement.
Okay. Um, do we as a board want to look at these? I realize we don't know what our free cash situation is. And I, I hate to be in the position where we're getting ready to literally finalize the warrant and we don't even know what we would recommend in terms of priorities because we don't have a, an understanding of what the free cash really is at this point.
Mr. Chairman, until we have the free cash, I think our job is a- as, as is pointed by the committee chair from the capital committee, um, they put together the list, we've put the list in going down to mediums and now it's up to us to recommend what's funded off that list. That's not their role. At this point, I think that I find it very difficult to do this without knowing how many dollars we have. Cause we'll spend two hours talking about it and find out we have $150,000 or something when we're done. Or find out we have 575 and didn't have to have any discussions at all. So I think that it's, I think it's, it's warranted to have discussions on each of these to understand them. But until I can put, whether I can afford it next to it, it's, um, it's, um, I don't think it's a good use of our time at this point.
Well, in part I agree with you. The question in my mind has to do with in part prioritization. We have what appears to be a number of items in the priority list. And so the question I would ask is for the moment, I guess we just leave it as it is. Um, and we'll deal with it once we know what the free cash situation is. I hate doing this, that we're about to sign a warrant and we don't even know what our free cash is at this point. Uh, I'm just being honest. I, I don't like not putting things in, not knowing.
I think this was one of the discussions we had, whether we wanted to put in just the exact items that free cash will cover, which is what select boards had been doing in the past, or do we want to put in a broader scope? So that the voters and the finance committee and the select board have some latitude on it and.
I don't mind.
Yeah. So I don't mind doing it this way. We've gone down to their medium, you know, to their medium level, we, and we put two more items on that are unique.
Yeah.
If we get the funding, I, I, I have a very difficult time, uh, prioritizing.
I just look at it and say, I don't mind having some extra items. What I'm concerned with is if we only get two or three or 400,000, then you get into a whole bunch of what ifs, what ifs, and it just bothers me, but that's my view at this point.
And actually reading over the list, I'm not terribly disappointed or concerned about the order they're in even, you know, and, and they did put a lot of effort into it and I mean, I could work my way down and if there's $6,700 later, picnic tables. Or if the grant goes away at the, uh, end of December, maybe consider the charging station, but there's, there's discussions that we can have as we get into it and, uh, but, um, I don't know that I would terribly disagree with their order right now, quite honestly.
Which, which order though? I'm sorry.
The order they're listed now, which I believe is right off of the, uh, planning, the committee's, uh, list.
In the warrant?
Yeah. Aren't they, isn't that or?
Hmm, not quite. Um.
Um, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Gazinski.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're primarily in the order. I think there was one, uh, item that got flipped out of place and I will correct that. Um, I think the excavator, uh, needs to be down a few notches. Uh, somehow it got popped up, but I will, I will make an adjustment on that. But other than that, I will double check the list from the capital committee to make sure it's in the order as presented. But it does represent the 15 items. Um, obviously it excludes the items that require borrowing. Those are a few later articles. Um, it does have the, all the items that listed in the, uh, high and medium priority.
Yeah. Yeah. The only one I saw.
On the elevator upgrade, is that something that can be deferred to the annual town meeting in the spring? Typically that's when we would do something like that. Is there a major issue with these, this elevator or?
I, I believe there is a pretty major. I believe there is a pretty major issue and it ranked very highly because if the elevator does all of a sudden just fail to operate, they have a major, major problem.
Okay, just asking. I just want to make absolutely certain. And the computer replacements, don't we normally, haven't we given those a, I'm trying to think of the correct terminology. Do we lease them or do we appropriate them? And I thought we did that at the spring annual town meeting. Am I mistaken on that?
That is when we usually do them. I remember seeing a lot of the Chromebooks, especially at the spring town meeting. Again, I didn't think we'd get that far.
I'm not looking at denying, if they need them, that's one thing. My concern is, we purposely try to do certain things at spring and not do them in the fall. But that's all I'm asking. If these can wait until spring, that's when I think we typically do them. If they can't, so be it.
Well, those were ranked in the medium priority.
Yeah, the medium priority, so the top two for the schools were the were the walk-in freezer and the elevator. And the computer ones are certainly mid, in the mid-range, so not as vital at this time. But, but, yeah.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairs, Carol. I believe these are over and above the requests that typically come in. These are not the ones that are on our current lease. And that current lease will be on the spring warrant as well. So these are over and above.
Yeah, would these be additions to the additional machines that would be leased? But if that's the case, then I would, I would, unless for some, I'd leave them on for the time being, but I'd have a tougher time recommending on them if they are the quasi budgetary items, like the school bus lease and lease and all that, because those really do have a place on the spring town meeting. Unless, and Aaron, you've attended all the meetings, are these an emergency repair replacement or is these just the traditional?
The urgency wasn't really stated. They went through their whole list and, you know, the top two or three things that they spoke about, it didn't include the computers, so.
If we did want to remove those, they can come back in the spring as they typically do, if they're not anything new and urgent, you know?
I would, I would absolutely concur on that. The last thing, excuse my ignorance, what is the steamer kettle?
It's for heating food, essentially. It's, it's a function of the cafeteria. So they use a tea food, make pasta and so forth.
It's not the same as my steamer that I use here at home. I take it because mine is not a $50,000 steamer, but I've just.
A $50,000 version of that, I believe.
Much better.
You're feeding 1,200 people or whatever.
I'm assuming that that's being put in because the one that they've got is failing or something. Is that correct?
It has, it has a leak, which is unreparable.
Ah, okay.
I would not mind, I'll restate, I wouldn't mind taking out 12, 13 and 14. I'll reconsider that because as you pointed out, those are the routine ones. And if they are, if those are truly the same as the routine ones we do every spring, we consider the budget. I think those have always made sense to be considered at budget time with the school bus lease. And even quite honestly, the police cruiser leases too. But I could take out those, those school items for the time being and bring them back in the spring.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the list as presented, removing items 12, 13 and 14 and adding back the picnic tables and the charging station.
Are we going to add pickleball to or no? We're going to wait and see if that goes through?
Let's wait to see if the elementary school building, I mean, my recommendation, wait to see the elementary school. And then also, I like to have people come in because if it's four or five families, I mean, I'm sympathetic if it's a huge block of people. I mean, then it's, it's a huge impact. I would mind, God, it's killing me to say it. Having a discussion about pickleball, you know, to see if it is, yeah, how many people are affected? I've seen letters from a few people, but they were unsigned. There wasn't a number. I'd like some concrete information behind that.
Now, before I second this, I mean, we've said before that we want items on this list and flexibility to be able to fund things should we have an unexpected amount of money. So should we really remove anything?
My only thought.
I think, I think what we want is let's give ourselves some flexibility. It's something that we have discussed over the years, to have extra items available, depending upon what the funding situation is or certain things aren't agreed to, we have alternatives. In the past, we've been very tight in how we chose to put items on the list. If something was taken off, we didn't have any alternatives that could be voted on. I think I'm stating that correctly and I think it's something that, at least this is my view, we ought to consider. And I know that Craig and I, when we were on FinCom, was something we looked at also. So that's my view of it.
And the only reason I'm removing the bottom 60, was it $76,000? Is I don't think we're going to vote 500,000. I don't think we're going to have 500,000 in free cash to vote at this town meeting. So I don't think, while we are limiting the list, I don't think we're taking anything off permanently. Those need to be back in the spring, you know? And I just think it's a timing issue as far as I'm concerned. And if, you know, we come in with 3 million or 2 million of free cash, we could have spent 7, 75, we still can in the spring. We can, we can vote them then at that, at that point. And with more, you know, knowledge about what we're spending on.
That's fine.
Okay, then I'll second the motion.
Okay, this was moved and seconded to accept Article 3 with the exception of items 12, 13 and 14 to be placed on the warrant. And we're going to be, and we're going to be adding, I've got to find them here, give me a second. The picnic tables and the energy charging station. So I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll step out for one minute. I've got a slight work emergency. I've got to step out for one minute. I have a small work emergency.
That's fine, we will.
I'll be right back in. It won't be more than three minutes. Call the right guy.
No problem. While Mr. Schultz is doing what he has to deal with, I am going to ask Mr. Gazinski, if I may, we had talked earlier in the week about the pet software. Do we have a spot where we want that or are we going to try to fund it out of something else?
We could certainly, I think it's, I have to take a look to see what the total cost of that was again.
$2,000.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something we certainly could account for within, within our current operating budget. And we don't have to look at that as a capital expense.
Excellent.
Since it's under 5,000.
Is this for dog licenses?
Well, yes, they need something to manage the dogs licenses and there are other things, rabies shots, all the things that they do with the dogs.
Yep.
And at the moment, they don't have software that helps them do that. So we want to make sure they get that software. I was all, I don't mean to digress, but I figure we've got a few moments and I do that. Let me just check something else here. I'm just trying to get caught up because quite honestly, I haven't had a chance all day to review a lot of these things. So keep me sort of honest when I am doing all this. Okay.
I apologize, I'm back now. Just had to. Better to yell than to text.
That's okay, that's okay. So now let's move on to the next item on the warrant, Article 4, which is the PFAS funding for one treatment plant. I think we've discussed that. We understand that there may be multiple modes of funding coming. But it looks like we're talking approximately $5.6 million. So that's what we're looking at. Proposed new article to, okay, this is for the ambulance. Our ambulance is presently on its last legs and I think I'll let Mr. Gazinski present this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This pretty much falls into the same category as Engine 1 in current Article 5. This would require a borrowing of $370,000 to pay for the cost of purchasing and equipping a new ambulance. Some of the urgency here, besides the fact that the current vehicle is starting to have major problems, is that the timeframe for these vehicles to be built is pretty far out. I believe for the ambulance, it's at least 12 months from the time we order till we can, we can have a new operating vehicle. And for Engine 1, it could be up to 18 months. So there is, and Engine 1 also is having a lot of mechanical problems that have had to be dealt with over the past year. So both of these would be borrowing, both of these articles have been reviewed and approved by bond counsel. And again, both of these will be borrowing through the general debt.
I also think it's important to point out, particularly on Engine 1, if I'm not mistaken, there's rust in the frame to the point where they think at some point they will not even be able to get it on the road. So major issue for Engine 1. But the other thing for ambulance, for the ambulance A1 is we use these to support other towns and that's revenue and that's part of why we invested in getting the certification for our EMTs. And if we don't have the ambulance, then we don't get the payback for that certification. So it's quite important to the town. The way things are working in the long run, these will pretty much begin to pay for themselves. But they haven't yet, but they are on the way. Excuse me. Okay, yes, Mr. Schultz.
Does it make any sense to combine these into one article since they're both fire related? Or is it more, and I don't know the answer to this. I have no opinion. I'm looking for guidance. Or is it better to keep them as two separate articles and if the borrowing link will be the same time? I don't know if there's reasons why.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it could be certainly borrowed under one bond. That's not a problem, but these, these items are usually for vehicles separated per vehicle, these types of things, and I think it makes sense to keep them separated. But there's certainly the leeway to bond them together as one, as one borrowing.
Thank you. Article 6 has to do with work off and basically we're raising the level of, call it pay reimbursement from 1350 to 1500. We are not increasing the total amount of the program, which means that if we go to the 1500, there'll be one or two fewer people, I believe, who can participate in it, but we are making sure that we control the actual cost of the program and that brings it in line with what's been agreed to over a period of years.
This keeps it up with the, with the minimum wage adjustments, basically, yes.
Okay, Article 7 is oh, the sewer article. And I think we've discussed this previously, since we don't have it in final form and it's too late to actually get a lot of the discussion out to the neighbors. We're recommending that this be removed as an article from the warrant. I'll take comments from anyone who would prefer to say anything more, but I think removal is where we're at.
I just think it has to be in the spring one and I think it is incumbent on us, the interim to have discussions about what we're going to do to control hookups until this happens because it is important, we're approaching our limits, as we all know, and it's just the common conversation, how do we control our limits? And this was one way we were going to do it. And without this being on the warrant, I think that really makes it much less likely that, you know, new construction will be able to connect to sewer because we're at 100 and whatever percent.
About 101, 102 somewhere.
Over 100. And, and I just think it's incumbent on us to get this on the spring town meeting warrant. And it's important for the town to pass it because without it, we're just not going to be able to encourage any growth in the town or even, even if you're opposed to growth, appropriate growth, that's the problem. Until this is hooked up, we have no real latitude for allowing new development or new anything and just, you know, anything to connect to the sewer that's not already on the sewer.
Well, I think it's also important that we do justice to those who are paying the rates right now for sewer because we have a number of people, I'm hearing numbers, that could be in the 300 or so range who have paid the betterment fees but have chosen not to connect. And as a result, in essence, the rate payers who have connected are paying for those people who have not connected. So there, there are a lot of issues here that we need to clean up and the bylaw will be intended to try to fix that.
And Mr. Chairman, one last request. Last time we spoke and the time before that, I've asked for the breakdown of the sewer fees. I, there's two parts to it. I've been told there's the fixed cost that we pay for our, whatever percentage of the plant we own and then there's the per gallon fee we pay for treatment. And I would like to know what the fixed cost is that we pay because that's the part that will be spread over more people, 300 more people potentially thereby reducing the cost to the rate payers. But I don't know if that's a $5 a quarter reduction or a $150 a quarter reduction or 50, I just don't know. And if I knew the number of rate payers that are on the sewer system now, how many more would be mandated to connect and how much we pay for our fixed cost? Then we could easily, you know, quantify how much each rate payer would save once this is, once this is passed.
I have, in fact, requested that likewise and I know that it's under consideration. They're trying to get those numbers for us. So. Okay. So I guess what we ought to do is vote on this and I will take a move, somebody's motion to remove this article.
I move that we remove Article 7 from the fall town meeting warrant.
Second.
So moved and seconded to remove Article 7 from the fall town meeting warrant. I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. So do.
Very well, thank you.
Okay. Article 8. This got a little complicated. It has to do with the groundwater elevation and I think I'm going to ask Mr. McVeigh if you don't mind to try to explain this to people.
Mr. Chairman, this is the one we did discuss before you arrived.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here on.
I apologize. Well, then, did everyone feel comfortable with the discussion?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
And I will move on and my apologies to everyone. Have we discussed Article 9 yet?
No.
No, the only one we did was Article 8.
I did, I know that Mr. Gazinski did forward to the board and I'm trying to find it, information on Article 9 that we titled additional changes to the charter. And I wanted to go over this and I think we need to discuss it. I'm also going to say during this discussion, if the Chair of the FinCom is on tonight, he's welcome to participate also in this discussion. Let me see if I can explain what happened. I had some concerns as I began thinking about it as to what we as the select board should be doing, shouldn't be doing in terms of appointments and so forth. So I asked Jay, our town council and Kate Federoff to take a look at it and to tell, tell me and us how other towns are doing it, not necessarily because we have to copy them, but because of the concerns I was raising. And they came back with these recommendations saying, these make a little more sense in their book. And I have talked with Mr. Gazinski, our town administrator about it also. So that in essence, the key appointments are still the responsibility of the select board. Certainly has involvement and recommendations from the. Certainly has involvement and recommendations from the Town Administrator. And then the Town Administrator has specifically. Specific things he or she can do in terms of appointments of all other individuals in the town. The way it's worded at the moment, there's a change in the introductory paragraph. I'm hopeful that both of the other board members have seen this. Um, I've, I've been told they have. I would love to have discussed it, but I can't, as you well know. Um, this is one of those where we have to discuss it here in public, and so we will. The upfront portion, there was only one other suggestion, and I believe it was from Mr. Gazinski. That we want to think about, and that might be the, in the event that we change the. That the town changes the. Clerk to an appointed position, that that may be one of these five items. Uh, five people that we want to appoint, maybe not the Treasurer, but perhaps the uh Town Clerk at any rate. I don't want to get into too much minutia there, but I think it's important that we consider which ones. We think are important for us to be responsible for the ultimate appointments.
Can I ask a mechanical question on this? I was having a tough time following it a little bit. There's a lot of calls. The, um, I, I, I don't disagree with your view on that, and if the clerk is added, I, I'm trying to find the.
First paragraph, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's first paragraph of Article Three, Section Three, Powers of Appointment.
Second, subsection one, powers and duty. It's the very first.
Okay, there we go. There it is. So, okay. So the, the blue section, is the blue section because it also says powers and duty? Does that relate to? Is that the new language that's proposed?
That's the new language um that Attorney Federoff um put forward. Um, after she reviewed it from a, a labor attorney view viewpoint, um.
Yeah, so taking this a section at a time, Article Three, Section One, Select Board Composition, that whole paragraph is yellow.
I think. It's unchanged.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a change in there, but I don't think it's significant or, or material. Article Three, Section Three, Powers of Appointment. Does this go through and just explain that the Select Board has the ability to uh appoint these boards specifically?
Correct, so that's unchanged. So yes, that's, so, so the, the new language is purely with subsection one, powers and duties.
Under that, this was all yellow, was what was thrown at me. So then we've got the section two, three, four, Town Administrator, change that, change that. Subsection one, powers and duties, going through A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, all in yellow. And then there's another section that is in blue. Am I to assume that the yellow is, is tossed and the blue is proposed?
The yellow subsection one, powers and duties would be removed and replaced with the blue subsection one, powers and duties.
Good, then, then I'm, when, when everything was highlighted, I wasn't sure.
I would, I would make one other um recommendation, just for consideration. Um, and um, in, in that, um, powers and duties, it lists the positions, it lists. Um, as you'd mentioned, Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, Town Accountant, Treasurer and Collector. Um, I think that over, that misses the point that the, the town has a Finance Director.
Right.
Which oversees those other two positions. Um, so my recommendation would be to remove Town Accountant, Town Treasurer and Town Collector, and instead insert Finance Director.
I absolutely concur.
I concur with that as well.
I agree.
And.
And if we're doing that, then the question is, in the event we go to an appointed clerk. Do we want to say that then that gets added in or has an appointment here?
I think it should be part of that. Um, I just don't know how the, the proper way to do that is. Because that's discussed theoretically after this.
I was getting ready to propose that we take these, we reorder it, just because they're numeric order on. The Charter doesn't mean we have to consider them in numeric order. We can start with the. Select or, or Town Clerk, move to the Select Board, then close with the uh Town Administrator, um. And then, but clerk.
Yeah.
And then remove it if it, the first part fails.
Right.
Yeah, I believe the Town Moderator has that discretion, um, if she would like to take up. Section four dash two before the other section, if, if she feels that that's appropriate for the way this rolls out.
Can't we just republish it in whichever order we choose? I mean, even though it's a different order later in the Charter, doesn't mean we have to consider them in the order they appear in the Charter, and then it. Donna wants to, I mean, either way, I'm certain she's going to be accommodating.
So you're saying, don't go sequentially, but move up the Town Clerk business. So that it's prior to this one in the event that doesn't pass, then we amend this on the floor and.
And include Town Clerk in the appointments of the uh Select Board, amending it if that part doesn't pass.
Yeah, no, I, I have no problem with that. If the other board members would like to do it. I would say let's reorder it accordingly. That takes away any confusion.
I mean, this is also assuming that. The moderator is going to do this section by section.
Yeah.
Well, whether she is or not, if we, if we put it in, in a different order. Then I think it makes it easier all the way around. We don't have to ask her to take it in a specific order. She'll do so. Now, if that's, if that's amenable to the other two members, then. We'll move it and we'll vote on the whole article in a moment.
And my thought had been that if it doesn't pass, if the clerk part doesn't pass, we're taking it first. One of the three of us can move to amend the.
Exactly.
Down, you know.
I would.
So just to clarify, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, so the board is looking to simply take section four dash two. Move it further up in the article. To put that um directly after um. Article three dash three, powers of appointment for this, for the Select Board, or you want to put that even earlier than that?
I put it up earlier than that.
Put it at the very beginning.
Put it at the very beginning, is my view. Just, let's deal with it. The other thing that I am concerned with is I did talk with the Chair of the Finance Committee. He understands we took out the renaming. He says they've already discussed it. They agree that it should be renamed, and he would like to see it back in. So I'm going to throw that to the other two board members, because this is obviously the Chair's committee. And he's saying he'd like to see that back in. So I know why we took it out. But I'm feel obligated to bring this back up.
With the, I mean, we, we were representing a committee that, that worked on this, the Charter Review that met. About a year and a half, and that's not what they recommended, and um, I, you know, so I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know that it needs to be back in there. But, I mean, if it's. It, it's really inside baseball. It's the Finance Committee and the Select Board discussing something that means nothing to the average voter. So if we want to put it in, I don't think it'll matter. If we want to leave it out, I don't think it'll matter. I, I think that, um. But, but there was a committee that spent a lot of time on it, came up with warrant committee as their recommendation. We. You know, so anyway.
I understand, Craig, I'm, I'm doing what I promised the Chair of the Finance Committee to do, which is to. Point out that he would like to see it back in since they did that. I know what your view is. I'm bringing it up for his request. Beyond that, it's up to the members of this board as to whether we want to reinstate it within this article.
So I will say I'm kind of um. Ambivalent, but, but so the, the, it was supposed to be the Warrant Committee. Now, it, they had proposed the Finance and Warrant Committee, and if. That body feels strongly about that, then um, I mean, I.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a big deal either way. So if they want it to be called that, I'd be okay with it going back in with that. I don't think it's a deal breaker one way or the other.
And the only reason, the other reason why we took the word finance out is, I will argue, there are two reasons. One of them was it's harder to recruit people, which they seem to believe is not the issue. And the other reason is they really are not the financial body of the town. And that is not what their role is specifically. That's the, the, all the fiduciary finance responsibilities lie with the Select Board. So expand, I don't have a problem leaving it as is, but I don't really feel comfortable proactively voting to expand their title further. But, you know, as I said, it's, it's part of the reason, but.
I mean, it could be argued that that expansion of the title.
Yeah.
Might be helpful.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm somewhat like Aaron right now. I'm ambivalent. I would normally not be. For it, except I'm trying to also deal with the fact that the Chair has asked. That we put it back in. I'm not going to say one way or the other. I really, it doesn't bother me. Whether we leave it in or take it out, makes no difference to me. What I don't want is something in there that's going to cause us to have. A major issue with anyone in the town. I don't think it would, but we've got enough other stuff going on, so.
I think it's harmless. It's, you know. In, out, either way.
If they want it, I, I really don't care. I agree with Craig.
I make a motion that we put the warrant, that we rename the Finance Committee to Warrant and Finance, or what they want, Budget.
Finance and Warrant.
Finance and Warrant Committee.
Second.
Fire has been recommended that we were put in the uh subarticle for renaming the Finance Committee to. Finance and Warrant, or Warrant and Finance. Does it matter which way we say it? To either of you?
Warrant and Finance is the way I would phrase it.
Okay, then make it more, is that okay, Aaron?
I mean, I would have gone with whatever they had come back with.
Let's do it Warrant and Finance and.
Okay.
Uh, poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, we'll give it to them as Warrant and Finance and call it good. Okay.
So I want to make one other suggestion, though, in the Article Subsection One, Powers and Duties. The main reason, besides removing Town Accountant, Town Treasurer and Town Collector, the main reason we moved the clerk was so that we could add Town Clerk to that list.
Yes.
So let's add that in.
Right. And obviously, we'll make whatever other change we have to if we need to.
Yeah, so for that one, just to make sure I'm summarizing appropriately. We're going to remove Town Accountant, Town Treasurer and Town Collector.
Right.
Um, and add Finance Director and Town Clerk.
That is correct.
Okay.
So we basically have Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, Finance Director and Town Clerk. In that first paragraph. Uh, the next paragraph doesn't change. To supervise part, uh, subparagraph A, I'll just call them Paragraph A for ease here. I just want to go through them quickly. That doesn't change. Paragraph B is to recommend appointment to Select Board of Chief Fire, uh, Chief of Police, Fire Chief. Director of Public Works, and we're going to put in here instead again.
Yep.
Finance Director and uh Town Clerk, correct? Okay, just wanted to make absolutely certain. Just making my notes here. Okay, um. Paragraph C. Um, I believe is what we agreed to. Pretty much on our last meeting. Um, employees for whom no other method, this has to do with the bargaining agreement, so on. Such appointments shall become effective. And this is something Kate put in as a result of her understanding of labor and labor negotiations. So have you both, are you both familiar with what she's putting in about the fifteenth day following? On which such notice of appointment is filed with the Select Board, unless the Select Board shall, within that period, by a majority. Of all its members vote to reject such appointment, or has sooner voted to affirm it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. So we're working through the blue section, so that's basically.
That's correct.
Start the yellow, okay.
Yeah. Again, this was uh recommended by her, and she is very familiar with the labor laws. The administration of personnel system and so forth is Part D. The next one, it looks like we go to, the new item is J. New J, let me put it that way, to negotiate on behalf of the Select Board, all personnel contracts and so forth. Uh, they'll all be subject to agreements, all such agreements will be subject to review and approval of the Select Board. There's a new, the new N is to acquire and make investigations anytime into the conduct and operation. Of office or performance duties of any officer or employee, Department Board, Commissioner or other town agency. Um, again, she's added that. And we go up through S at this time. Though, and oh, I see, in new paragraph P. She removed the sentence that we agreed should be removed, which was for this purpose, the Town Administrator shall have the authority. And apparently she agreed with, I remember she did say she agreed with that, because there are situations where he can't force somebody. But we are keeping in the sentence, he has the right to attend and speak at any public meeting at of any multiple member body.
On item R, um, there's a strike through on R in the blue section. That's just errant, correct? That we're keeping that whole, there, there's just a strike through to the letter, that whole section staying.
I'm sorry.
That's just an error. That's not, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So are we in agreement that this is what we want in the warrant as presently worded?
Yes.
Up through that section, yes, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, if I may. I, I did also, um. Uh, get just a couple of recommended notes or revisions from, from uh. Uh, Town Council, that they're, they're pretty minor, but I just want to make note of them. Um, this is all in the blue section, um, I don't, on the item M. Uh, it says to prosecute, defend and compromise subjects to the approval of the Select Board, all litigation to which the town is a party. Um, Jay recommended to add, and to direct Town Council or Special Counsel with respect to such litigation. So it's just, it's just putting a, putting a highlight on that, um, just to make sure that, um.
Would you repeat that, please?
So it's to prosecute, defend and compromise subjects to the approval of the Select Board, all litigation to which the town is a party. And to direct town or special counsel with respect to such litigation.
I'm fine with that, because that's basically the way I read defend, prosecute and compromise, yeah.
That's part of that process, yes. And. Um, one other section, the only other one under P. Um, I think we were just talking about that, Mr. Chairman, the Town Administrator shall have the right to attend and speak at any public meeting of any multiple member body. Um, it should be except executive sessions. Um, he just wanted to um, put that in there, so that's basically it.
Okay.
And subsection two didn't change at all, the temporary enacting?
No, no, no changes to that section.
No. No, this was the only one that she reviewed in details of these are recommended changes. Okay, I'll take a motion to put it into the warrant as these changes reflect.
I'll make a motion to, the warrant pending the changes, that are inclusive of the changes that we discussed.
Second.
So moved and seconded to put these, this revised section into the warrant with the changes as we just discussed. Uh, poll the board, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. So done. Okay, so.
Chairman, and um, just a note to the board, and I just want to um, get your authorization for this. Um, Attorney Kate Federoff, our special, our, our Town Counsel for Labor, some of our labor issues. Has indicated that she would be available to go to the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow night to answer questions of the Finance Committee. In regards to this section in particular, so is the board okay with uh having Attorney Federoff attend that meeting?
Yes.
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 Alright, great, thank you.
I'm not gonna look to be made clearly clear that when we were discussing this last week, or whatever day it was, um, middle of the week last week, um. The, we had ideas that we could change things that the labor expert has made clear that we shouldn't, that's why we have. Changed our recommendations on it, you know, um, so in- instead of going with the bylaw, going with uh. Charter as originally proposed, so I know the finance committee wanted to see it shortened. Um, I'm going to side with the attorney on this one, um, because I think their interpretation. Um, is in line with what we had the first go around, and I was as surprised as anybody to see these new ones, I set to go split it between a bylaw, job description, and a charter. But when our attorney tells us that that's not appropriate, I'm going to side with the attorney and resend my previous uh, views. Reconsider my previous views.
Okay, so, our. I think, um, Mr. Kuzinski, the answer is we have no problem with asking Kate to attend the FinCon meeting.
Great, thank you, I will let, I will confirm that with her tomorrow morning.
So let me just make sure we're all in agreement on this, we now have article nine, which consists of. The, oh, what was the very first, I am losing track.
It would be.
Oh, we're gonna put the town.
To town clerk.
Town clerk, then we talked about the finance committee, and I don't care which one of those comes first. Um, and then we get into. The select board is five members. And finally, the town administrator and his powers to appoint. Okay. The rules conditions. I think that we now can say that's the order that we want this. Article nine to be in, and we concur with each of the sub elements, I don't know what else to call them at this point, paragraphs, elements. Items, whatever, is that the consensus of the select board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote on that. Okay. Excuse me while I scroll down and see what else I'm looking at here.
So Mr. Chairman just confirmed, so the, that means the proposed new article. Um, can be uh, can be eliminated, uh, or not, not, not considered to be added. Um, for the bylaw.
Yes.
The town administrator bylaw, so.
Okay. I think this covers it all in one. Yeah. Okay. Article ten, I'm moving on to see if the town will transfer the sum of forty thousand dollars for tree removal, any further discussion on that and concerns?
Nope.
Okay. Um. Then there's a proposal for another article to transfer funds, uh, some of. To repair sidewalks and so forth. Um, I know that there's a great interest in having the sidewalks. Uh, repaired, completed, added to, my only concern is. Having an article. With even any monetary value attached to it, we don't know what that specifically is supposed to be allocated to. Um, maybe you have different views, so I open it to the other two members.
Well, do we know what the? I mean, there's apparently the sidewalk funds, do we know what's in it? Do we know what's appropriate? To use of it, so let's say there is fifty thousand dollars in it, does it make sense to use thirty or forty and keep a ten thousand dollar buffer for an emergency repair? Or, um. What would make sense?
Um, I could, Mr. Chairman, I make say right now. Right now, we have a fifty thousand dollars in that account, um, I have had some discussions with the DPW director in regards to this. And um, uh, he has indicated that he is currently working on um, design plans. Um, to put a proposal forward in the spring, um, for some sidewalk repair and construction. Um, that is pretty much his timeline at this point, um, so he is certainly not ignoring it, he, he agrees that sidewalks. Need to be addressed, that they're certainly an important feature, just like roads. Um, and uh, he said he should be prepared over the winter to submit. Uh, project to the uh, to the select board and the capital committee. Um, that, that there's still some work needs to be done on some design in order to do that.
Let me ask this, if, let's assume we appropriated the funds or allowed them. And yet we don't know quite where they're gonna be used, could any work be done during the winter, or is this work that's gonna be done in the summer regardless?
Um, again, I did ask the DPW director that question, he indicated the earliest that work could be done would be sometime in the mid to late April timeframe. Um, so essentially, you know, not, not much before the next annual town meeting.
So delaying this to get some comprehensive proposal in front of the board and the town. Would really not constitute any real delay, yeah, I mean sidewalk repair or. Upgrades or new sidewalks installed regarding.
Yeah, it would, it would not entail any significant delay in any construction. And actually, the town meeting would, in the spring would have the benefit of actual design plans and, and more details as to what would be done with the funds. Um, I mean, the town always has the option to just put funds in the side, and you know, money into the sidewalk fund. Um, but um, but we wouldn't have any uh, specifics until the spring.
Okay, are there any other comments from the select board members?
Yeah, I um, I, I fully support the idea of sidewalks, but actually, let me rephrase that. I fully support sidewalks, I don't support the idea of sidewalks, and I think we need to have a concrete plan and project in front of us. With a price tag associated with it, because we're limit, we're allocating limited resources. I don't wanna take fifty thousand dollars instead of decide on the hopes that it buys us something. My feeling is doing a major stretch of sidewalk is gonna be significantly more expensive than a hundred thousand dollars. Um, yeah, doing like, I'm just starting at the school, so I'm just picking, but Spring Street or. Roads near the schools or others in the downtown area, I think doing any major project. Is gonna have real significant costs until I get those numbers from the DPW, I'm not comfortable setting aside funds. On the hypothetical, I think it's an important project, I think it needs to be done, again, it's something that, um, it may involve borrowing that needs to be done, if it's that important to us. But we can talk about that.
It does seem a little rushed to just be trying to throw. An amount of money at that right now without plans.
I think, based on what I'm hearing, I think if nothing else. The select board should say to the town administrator that we really want a concrete proposal. For the spring town meeting, so that we know what sidewalks are being prepared, the cost. Uh, alternatives, in other words, we want, we want something done, but we wanna know what it is that's being done, so we. Understand what we should be allocating and why, and preferably something that goes beyond. Just what's going to be done this coming year, but a plan that says, here's where we think. What we're planning for the next several years to work on sidewalks with the town. Is that a fair recommendation?
I'll, I'll even take the, what are we doing this spring, you know, just the first step, so yeah, a comprehensive plan's preferable, but.
Oh, yeah.
A major project would be good to hear.
Yeah, we have to have the project, but we want the more, we also want associated with it. A more comprehensive plan, so we know where we're headed, it doesn't mean it will all work that way, but. Let's get something now, it's been neglected for far too long.
Mr. Chairman.
Last meeting of the sidewalk committee twenty years ago.
I'm sorry, I.
As Lorne, I believe.
I've been trying to use the chat to raise my hand, but uh, I have not been successful. Um, I would like to request that the select board actually appoint a sidewalk committee. Um, the economic development committee of which I am a member, um, not a ranking officer, but a contributing member. Has been doing a lot of research, uh, as to strategies that, um. Would be beneficial to the towns for the towns' consideration, and they range from everything such as the electric charging station you discussed tonight. And also, uh, new policies that are used by other towns to better contribute funds. Uh, such as for open space development, when a developer is alleviated the cost of the asphalt only. For the second sidewalk in order to, as part of a um, open space development subdivision, um, zoning. Uh, program, that that money, as the DPW director has said many times, is insufficient to do site work, engineering, potentially land takings and such. And that those are the true costs of the work, and it seems to me that where we do have money sitting in the account and in a sidewalk account. And we have in fact had a sidewalk committee in the past, that um, is a parallel track to the economic development committee, that this would be an excellent initiative. For those people who are really interested in this, there's a lot of ADA laws, but there's a lot of work that, uh, Mr. Weiss is, is championing. Um, for downtown access and economic development that would um, benefit greatly from a clear. Uh, long-reaching policy with respect to sidewalk funding and also a prioritization.
Thank you. Okay, that's something we can take under advisement for a future meeting, not tonight. So anyone else who wants to make any comments? Okay, so I, it looks to me like we're saying we are not going to include this article. Um, it hadn't been included earlier, so I see no reason to say we're gonna remove it, is that fair? Okay, we'll move on to article eleven. Uh, see if the town will vote to transfer available funds in the sum of seventy eight thousand eight hundred ten dollars to fully. Uh, fund the snow and ice for a nine deficit for to fiscal year twenty one. Um, if I'm not mistaken, snow and ice budget's the only one that is allowed to run a deficit like this, but we do have obligations. In that amount, and we have to fund it accordingly, so. Article twelve, oh, excuse me, Mr. Schultz.
No, that's fine, that's right, yeah.
Article twelve, see if the town will vote to appropriate for taxation, transfer funds seventy of twenty five thousand dollars to the unemployment account. Take any other action related there too, Mr. Kuzinski, you've summarized this on several occasions, but please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, the uh, the town, um, as you know, is self-insured for unemployment. We do not pay an unemployment insurance premium, um, in order to fund the obligations related to unemployment. For which the state, um, basically sends us a bill for all those that apply for unemployment through the state. Um, we keep an account, uh, funded in order to pay those costs, so. Uh, every once in a while, we do have to add funds into that account, so this is simply a request to add. Twenty five thousand in funds to the unemployment account.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Article thirteen, to transfer available funds in the sum of seventy three hundred dollars for an OPEB actuarial study. To take any other action there too, the problem with this is, it's pretty much a mandatory thing. I'd much prefer if we're gonna spend seventy three hundred, we know what the OPEB's fund stands, stands at right now, I just so put the money into the fund, but. Apparently, we have to pay this, um, that's one person's view at any rate.
Picking tables, no, um, I, I agree with you, it's ridiculous that we have to spend seventy three hundred dollars, that we're out of compliance by millions, but we legally have to do it.
Yeah, I understand.
I could tell you how to compliance, you know, a nice dinner.
I was just gonna say. Okay, article fourteen, town will establish a workers' compensation claims reserve fund in accordance with blah, blah, blah. And raise appropriate uh, transfer of money to take an action there too. Um, and basically, it looks like we're proposing that.
So, Mr. Chairman.
You go ahead, Mr. Kuzinski.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so this, in this item, we, um, I'm requesting actual new language for this article.
Yeah.
Um, and further research for this, and in consultation with the Department of Revenue. Um, and I, I think the, the new language is in, in the most recent copy sent out in blue. Uh, the language that, um, and I've discussed this with the finance director, the language we're looking for is to see if the town will vote to accept. The fourth paragraph of MGL, chapter forty one, section one eleven F. Which would allow the town to create a special injury leave indemni- indemnity fund to be expended by the select board. So basically, what the, the mean, the reason behind this is by setting up this account. Um. In this particular account doesn't, it doesn't fund it, but it just sets up the account, and it would allow the town to um, put funds in this account. Um, which would uh, help if there's uh, injury on duty, whether the, in the police department or fire department. There'd be funds in an account to actually pay some of those costs, so that we wouldn't have ish budgetary issues with those departments mid-year. Based on um, injuries uh, that occurred during the year, so it is a problem that, that has occurred on a, on a regular basis. And it helps stabilize the annual budget.
Do we have any idea what typically would need to go into this fund, how much?
In the last uh, five years, uh, the average that we paid out to the worker, uh, to the one eleven F fund for police and fire. Um, compensation is a hundred, uh, ninety five thousand dollars.
A year or?
A year. No, every year for the last five years, the average has been ninety five thousand dollars. And what happens now is that it's, it's seen in the bu- it, there's no provision for us to do anything but flow it through the police and fire department budget. You'll see it as just part of the base pay, that's one of the questions that always comes up, why is your overtime or shift coverage so out of whack? We have to pay the firefighters and the police officers at a hundred percent of their um, rate. When they're out on injury, and we have to ca- get coverage for that, and that's at one and a half times the, the. Cause it's normally an overtime situation, they are using the um, on qualified fighters as they can. But um, that's what drives the overage in the, um, at least this year, and over the course of many years for the fire department. It's the injuries.
Okay, if, with this article, should we be funding it?
Yeah, I believe you, every year we'd have to fund it for at least a hundred thousand. Uh, it, any amount that uh, isn't used in a, in a current year would roll to the next year, so the fund would have a little more balance in it. Um, this fund is not allowed to go in deficit, so if it did go in deficit, then we'd have to um, charge it back to the operating budget. Of whatever department either, and this is only for police and fire, it doesn't, uh, the one eleven F only covers police and fire.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going back to your question, I think the plan would be to seek funding for this account, um, at the Maytown meeting. Um, so that it was funded from that point forward, um, but yes, that's what we'd be seeking to do, is, is looking for available funding. In the spring to uh, build up this account, so that would cover those costs.
Okay, you anticipated my question, which is the when the funding should occur, go ahead, Mr. Schultz.
And if it does go into deficit, we're no worse off than we are now, because we charge the departments anyway, so it's. You know, it, it's just the proactive first tranche of money that you have, and annual tranche of money you have to put in that.
And then it gives you a more realistic view of how the departments are being run operationally on a day-to-day basis versus. They, you know, have, you know, employees out on injury, and that's skewing the look of it when you're looking at their operating budget.
But did you say that you have to put a hundred thousand dollars in each year by statute?
No, no, you can fund it, um, however you, you wanna fund it with, whether you fund it through the tax, whether you fund it through free cash. Or whether you fund it from available funds.
But it, it, there's no minimum or requirement for annual funding on it, it makes sense to fund it, don't get me wrong.
Right.
There was anything that was the minimum requirement.
What you're really saying is, we on average are about ninety five thousand.
Right.
At annually, and so that's why we ought to think about funding it at that level.
Right, and honestly, if it's already ninety five thousand coming out of the budgets, we could look at doing it probably within our, our existing. Fiscal construct, if we're not spending a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know how you allocate it first go around. But as now to police and fire overtime, then there's, might be money available, or if you have enough free cash.
What ends up happening now is we have to do transfers at the end of the year, so we have to get it from other departments. And other situations in order to balance our budget.
So if there's a free cash, you can put it in, start that way.
This would have it essentially pre-allocated for that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have a problem with this? Then I see.
It makes sense.
Take a motion to include this as article fourteen.
I move that we include the new article language for article fourteen in the fall town meeting warrant.
Second.
Move and seconded to include, to remove the old and include the new, um, language for article fourteen in the town word. Um, I'll poll the board, Mr. Jermaine, yes, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
And then the last part is to vote to rescind the following. But unused debt authorizations, and this is very typical of. Situations where we've already funded them, but we just didn't need all the money that was. Uh, in the bond or whatever that we funded, so. Um, nothing special in this article, we go through this, I think, almost every year. Okay, is there anything else in the warrant, I think that covers the entire warrant. Before we vote on accepting it and closing the warrant. Then I'll take a motion. To close the warrant.
I move that we close the, uh, fall town meeting warrant for November eighth, twenty twenty one.
Okay.
It's moved and seconded to close the town warrant for the fall annual town meeting on November eighth, twenty twenty one. I'll poll the board, Mr. Jermaine, yes, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Okay, town warrant is now closed, now this is the warrant we're planning to sign.
Yeah.
Um. Mr. Kaczynski, is there anything that's likely to come up tomorrow night? At. The finance committee, that would, you can think of, that would cause us to have to reconsider what we've just done.
Uh, nothing that I'm aware of, um, but I can never predict the actions of a committee before they meet. Um, but there's nothing that I am specifically aware of at this time.
Yeah, I think also, as I've said before, I think that we've listened, we, we've made significant. Changes, we've, we've accommodated, I think now it's time to keep the process moving to give a final. Item to them to vote on and work with, and. I think that's it, I mean, I think we've been one of the more responsive select boards, uh, of, of late, you know, so.
Okay, well, I just bring it up because I want, I do believe we've tried to. Meet all the concerns that have been brought to our attention. And I think this is a good warrant as it stands. And we are prepared to. Express our views at town meeting and. Explain it to the town at that time, so. Very good. To all of you, thank you very much, now I'm going to. Give me a second here while I try to figure out.
For Karen's sake, I will be in on Thursday to sign, I have an event tomorrow night that I will be home about midnight from, so.
Okay. You sign the warrant as submitted, you did not.
Thank you, thank you, Karen, I was just about to mention that, so we just need to, need a final, we need a final vote from the board. To, to approve the warrant as amended. Um, and to vote to sign for the board to sign the warrant.
Okay.
Then we have to leave work early on Thursday.
Then I will take, at this point, a. Motion. To us, a vote to approve the warrant as amended and to sign the warrant as it presently stands.
Um, I move that we. Accept the warrant as amended and.
Sign the warrant.
Sign the warrant?
As.
As it stands?
Yes. Okay. Okay, second.
The move and seconded to accept the warrant as we've, as discussed, and to sign said warrant as it stands. I'll poll the board, Mr. Jermaine, yes, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Okay. So is that satisfactory, Ms. Beret?
Yes, that will do it, thank you.
Okay, now. I apologize, but in all of this confusion, I seem to have lost my place. For.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the next item you have is the, the board and committee liaison updates, if there are any.
Correct.
Sounds great to me. And I hope to find, like, very shortly. So.
I don't think you need to do the capital one.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think, go ahead, if either of you have attended.
I don't think I've had it, but.
I, I sort of have one. Um, I was in another meeting, so. I made my husband take notes for the school committee. So, let's see, um. I'm just looking for the high points here, hold on. He took really good notes. Um, there was discussion about threshold rates, um, by building, what percentage, um. Of people need to be vaccinated, where it would be, um, discussed to, um. Lift the mask mandate in those buildings for vaccinated individuals. With sixth grade in the building, it's a problem because a lot of them are under twelve and too young to be vaccinated. So the numbers would have to be like a higher percentage rate from grade seven through twelve to compensate. So that's, that's where. That's where that stands at the moment, so it looks like we'd be looking at a ninety five percent vaccination rate needed for grade seven through twelve. To meet that eighty percent threshold. Um. Let's see. Um. They did note that some facilities, like the garden or Gillette, might require vaccinations, and some towns can require that visiting teams be vaccinated. So unvaccinated players could be banned and disqualified and teams may forfeit. Um.
Just a side note, Hopkinton was announced on television today that they are the very first to hit the eighty percent mark. So we're in competition.
Yeah. I did just see that this afternoon, um. They are acknowledging they, the school had, um, a couple issues with auto calls, so every parent got a call that their child was absent. But they really weren't, so they apologized for that, they found the problem and fixed it. Um. And that is the, the biggest, the biggest points, I guess.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Schultz, did you?
I had no meetings between our last one and this one.
Good. And I don't believe I've had any meetings in the interim either, other than. Listening to this, uh, finance committee, but they were just going over the warrant, we've discussed. That, so. I had nothing more, Mr. Kaczynski or Ms. Beret, do either of you have anything?
Um, I have, I have nothing, uh, other than. Basically, to state what the board is already aware, is that the, the finance committee. Um, is meeting tomorrow night, um, so they'll be reviewing the final warrant. As was just approved by the, uh, by the board. Um. And, uh. They're meeting again, I believe, on the twentieth, which I think is the deadline for their, uh, recommendations.
Okay. I am. Considering attending that finance committee meeting with Mr. Kaczynski. If either of the two of you or both of you choose to attend, just remember. We can't comment to each other or on each other with regard to any comments we might make to the finance committee. Fair enough?
And we'll be out, so I will not be attending, feel safe.
All right, I apologize, I didn't get it. Uh, posted soon enough to allow all of us to attend as an open meeting, so my apologies on that.
No problem.
Okay. Um. Do we have draft minutes for approval?
Yes. Um. I move that we approve the minutes from the select board meeting on October fourth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the draft minutes for October fourth, twenty twenty one. From the select board. I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. So those minutes are approved. Okay.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, I move that we approve the minutes from the select board meeting on October sixth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Okay, I'm just verifying this myself, um. It's been moved and seconded to prove the minutes from the select board meeting of October sixth, twenty twenty one. I'll poll the board, Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. and Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay, those are the only two I see in our packet. Okay, and I think we have a sewer water. Commitment that has to be approved.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I recommend that the board vote to approve the water sewer department commitment to the collector. For September of two thousand and twenty one. In the amount of five thousand three hundred and three dollars and seven, in thirty seven cents.
I'll take a motion.
That we approve the sewer, um. Water commitment in the amount of five thousand three hundred and three dollars and thirty seven cents for September twenty twenty one.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for the collector for September twenty twenty one. In the amount of five thousand three hundred and three dollars and thirty seven cents. I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Approved. Is there anything else? Before our final. Motion of the evening. Which case, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Um, I'm having a hard time dealing with the fact that. We're getting out again around nine o'clock at night, but I'm more than happy. I'll take the final motion.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
So move that we, the select board adjourn, I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
We are hereby adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Good night, guys.